Good evening, the time is now eight, ooh, 7:02. I would like to call the Beloit City Council meeting in order at this time. Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call shows all council members present.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance, may we all stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three are special orders of the day and announcements. We did have our proclamation, but we're going to hold that over into our next meeting. We want to make sure that all the participants are present to receive that, so we'll be moving item 3A to our next meeting. Which brings us to item four, public hearings, item 4A, please.
A resolution amending the 2010 and 2011 home budgets related to funding for neighborhood housing services.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen, please.
You had previously approved the budgets for 2010 and 2011 home funds. We realized in hindsight that we made a mistake. In 2010 and for 2010 and 2011, we awarded funds to neighborhood housing services for owner occupied rehab projects. Under our home agreement, they are our community housing development organization, which is the first 15 percent that's take, comes out of that grant per home regulations. Because those are choo-choo funds, they must be used for either, they have to be used for property that they own, so they can't give out loans with those dollars. So the owner occupied rehab is not eligible. So after discussing with NHS, what we're proposing is that they use those funds for acquisition rehab projects. So the houses would be purchased, rehabbed, and then resold to owner occupants. And CDA did review this at a meeting about a month ago, and they did recommend approval unanimously of doing that.
Thank you. Item four is a public hearing. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for item 4A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening, please come forward. Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and entertain a motion from councils, their motion for approval.
Motion.
Motion by Lukey, second by Newton. Any council comments or questions? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, 4A passes 7-0. Item five is citizen participation. We've reached a point on the agenda where citizens can come forward and speak. We do ask that you refrain from personal attacks from counselors, city staff. Staff may not, I mean, city council may not act on your comments, but we may refer to the proper department to where it should fit. Is there, we do have people that filled out citizen participation sheets. This is also a time, if you were not able to fill out a sheet, to come forward at this time. We do like to limit you to three minutes, however, I will be respectful of the time. So the first person that we have is Steve Warren.
(Inaudible) good evening, I'm Steve Warren, I'm president of Beloit Firefighters Local 583, and I'm here just to talk a little bit about the budget and the process and how we got here, and some concerns I have. Given a timeline here, we met with the city manager out at 2400 Springbrook quite a few months ago in anticipation of the budget coming up, and he was giving us input on what the budget process and what it looked like. And at that time, from the city manager, we asked questions, and we asked if we could be involved along the way of the budget process, and he said absolutely, and that the organization be looked at and reviewed from the top down, and we'd work together in the process. Shortly thereafter that, the first budget proposal came out, and we sat down with the chief, with Chief Liggett, and he explained our portion of it, and told us that there's gonna be some changes, and there'll be some, a few amendments to it, stuff like that, and he'd get back to us with the final number of what our portion of the fire department budget was. A few weeks went by, we met again with the chief, and we were talking about the, what our portion was, and what they came up with for a figure, and stuff like that, and we got to the point in the conversation where it came, became clear to me that, at that point, you'd already submitted a new budget with the cuts, and what all the proposals, staffing cuts are gonna make to the fire department. And so by that, we were already taking all the, taking all the process of the, being part of the process, we were taken out of it already. I know there's a few more meetings that were held subsequent with the chief, we talked to him about some of our ideas, trying to work together on this, come up with some proposals, come up with some ideas, and these ideas seemed to go into the city manager, but then they never were actually proposed to the council, or at least if they were, they weren't the way we had proposed them, and they were changed to what they were, they were changed prior to you seeing them. So obviously, it was to a point there where we were not gonna be heard. Later on, in another workshop out at 2400 Springbrook, there were some things said at that meeting that weren't supposed to be let out or be talked about, and after we, after the meeting was stopped, I went over and talked to President Levy, and asked him for a meeting with the city council, with the, if we could present our, our problems or our issues to the council. After numerous calls and attempts, they were never, they went unanswered, and so finally, at another meeting, at Grinnell Hall, I talked to Kevin, and he asked if I could sit down and talk to him one-on-one, and he said he would, but as the story goes, we never got to meet, we never got to explain our ideas or even be heard. So I guess, you know, with you having your vote on the budget tonight, I feel, you know, I've tried to go through the proper channels, I tried to talk to the right people, to get to the meeting, at least hear our side of it. If you'd have heard our side of it, at least listened to what we said, and you were okay with voting tonight, I'd say, okay, go vote for it. I know our medical director, Dr. Rick Barney, had sent letters to every one of you, and he had some serious concerns from a medical director's standpoint, and I'm not sure how many of you did, or how many of you even talked to Dr. Barney, but if you didn't, you're missing out on some important information. So with that, I know you've got a budget in front of you tonight, that's tough, we've made a lot of cuts, there's a lot of things that are happening, and gonna be a lot, change of services the way things are going down, and even though you never got to hear our plans, we feel our plans had merit, and they should have been able to be heard, and I went through the proper channels, and they were never answered. Nobody got to hear what we had to say. And possibility, we could, you know, save some of the services, or keep the services at the level we are with the citizens, so, you know, it's too bad you're only getting the information, the city manager wants it to hear, so I'm asking tonight to do the right thing, hold over the voting on this for another couple of weeks, at least you can talk to us and hear what we have, so everybody has the input, so you can hear all the sides of the story, and you need to remember that the city manager works for the city council, the city council don't work for the city manager. Thank you.
Ian Coates?
Hi, I'm Ian Coates, 936 Highland Avenue. As I understand it, you're considering passing a ban on firearms in public land. Just wanna say that it's not a good idea, 'cause it won't keep the firearms out of the hands of the bad guys. The good, law-abiding citizens are the ones that need them to protect themselves, especially in many parts of Beloit, so, don't, don't do it. Also, there are lots of National Rifle Association events, where they have big picnics, where people bring out their firearms, you know, no ammunition, but people bring them off, they talk about them, show them off, things like that, and it pulls in people from a large area. If we were to pass a resolution where we didn't allow firearms, we'd close ourselves off to any possibility of events like that. It could bring in people to Beloit, they could see what we have to offer, spend their money at our hotels, restaurants, and so on. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mikes Aron.
I'd also like to speak on Agenda Item 7, about the gun ban. You guys being city councilors, you get a lot of opportunities to get feedback from the residents, a lot of people tell you, you know, what they think of you, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, but you know, here's a chance where you have a, the opportunity to tell the residents what you think of them. And when it comes down to it, you know, your stand on the Second Amendment, and how you view personal liberties, the question is, how do you view the people that you represent in Beloit? Are they trustworthy, productive citizens? Or do you just view them as an unruly crowd that needs to be lorded, controlled, supervised, and taken care of? I think that the way that you guys vote on this decision will say a lot about your character, and your trust and faith in the citizens, and I'd also like to mention that with some of the cuts that we're having to public safety, 10 positions being cut, personal safety is now more important than ever. You know, what happens if you have a young mother with her child, and they're, you know, maybe using the public transportation, or they're going out for the day, and one of their trips happens to be involved in a city building or so forth, and criminal comes up, makes threats, to do whatever they would feel like, and you're gonna have to give her a choice. Is she gonna be able to have a way to defend herself with a firearm, or are you gonna let her have a cellphone, and she can call the police? And if you let her have the cellphone, and she calls the police, I guarantee you, the police will show up, they will come, and they'll take photos of the body. However, I think it's absolutely important that we don't create pockets within the city of Beloit that say, you're right to protect yourself with weapons and firearms is not allowed here, but you know what, if you're a criminal, go ahead, because criminals, they're not gonna be paying attention to any kind of restrictions, or we already have laws against murder, and if they're going to be, don't value human life, and they're gonna murder somebody, they're not gonna pay attention to the gun ban either. And so first and foremost, I like to say that I'm against the gun ban. I think that if the citizens have a permit, they should be allowed to carry it. I'm also against denying open carry, which does not require a permit. And with that said, I do have a few suggestions to mitigate the ordinance, the way it's written right now. There's a fine, if you're found in violation at the state level, of $25 apiece per violation. City's proposing a fine between $300 and $500, depending on how many violations you have. I say, look, if the guy has his permit, and he's in violation of the ordinance, no reason to charge him $300 to $500, only make it 25. I also like to say that there's a list in the agenda, where the ban is going to apply. If you were to change that list up, it would be a little bit more acceptable, for instance, here in City Hall, you have police protection, if something bad were to happen, the police are nearby, it's a little bit more understandable here, versus somewhere out in public, where it's a little bit harder, and takes a little bit more time for police to respond, if you're out in a public park, for instance. I'd also like to say that there's some disadvantages. If you're gonna be passing an ordinance, you have to be prepared to enforce it. That means that you need to have metal detectors at all your entrances, you have to post signs, you may even need to have police officers at each location provide protection for people. You might have to install lockers, you know, someone wants to show up, they wanna come inside, they can't bring their firearm with them. You know, if they're at the park, and maybe they need to use the restroom, should they set their weapon down on the grass for a child to pick up, because it's illegal to take it inside? Obviously, you wouldn't want that, but what are the alternatives? The alternative is spending a lot of money, which the city doesn't have, to install lockers and metal detectors and so forth. Then I'd also like to mention that the way the proposed ordinance is written, I'd suggest that you take out the word "locations," because it could be misinterpreted. I believe the intention of the ordinance is only to put on a limit in the public buildings and facilities, but it does say "City of Beloit Locations," and some people, that might be misinterpreted in the future, as far as, well, does the location apply to other places besides city buildings and facilities? So I'd recommend just taking that word out altogether. I'd also like, in closing, I'd like to mention that, I just wanna read the Second Amendment here. It says that "The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." It's at the federal constitution, and the Wisconsin State Constitution, Article 1, Section 25 says, "The people have the right to keep and bear arms for security, defense, hunting, recreation, or any other lawful purpose." And then I wanna mention that somebody who actually does go forth and get the concealed carry permit, they're 5.7 times less likely to be arrested for violent offenses than the general public, and 13.5 times less likely to be arrested for nonviolent offenses than the general public. I'm concerned about criminals running around with guns shooting at people, but I have no concerns whatsoever for law-abiding citizens to be able to protect themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one is Paul, can't make out the last name, but 102 North Rivers Street, apartment 301.
I'm not much for speaking right off the cuff, so I drafted a short statement here I would like to read to you. Says, "Dear City of Beloit and esteemed council members, my name is Paul Lembrick, I reside in Janesville, Wisconsin. You may well ask, why is a Janesville resident speaking for you today? Simply because you may be about to pass an ordinance that affects my freedom and rights as clearly stated by the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America. Rather than indulge in a lengthy debate of that subject, I will move on. There are a number of other Wisconsin communities that have chosen not to post their properties against firearms for many reasons. Some communities have deliberately not announced they will have no intention of posting against concealed carry on their property to avoid demonstrations of anti-gun protesters. Therefore, their numbers are unknown. What is so far known is that the following government bodies that will be allowing concealed carry are, so far to date, City of Delavan, City of Elkhorn, Village of Germantown, Village of Sturtevent, City of Green Bay, City of West Bend, City, or County of St. Croix, City of Delafield, the Town of Delafield, the City of Kenosha, Chippewa County, Fort Atkinson, City of Antigo, Dodge County, Muskogee Public Library, the State of Wisconsin, parentheses, many buildings, and that does include our capital, and the City of Franklin. I'm sure that as time goes by, it will be found that many other units of government will be found that have not made any effort to post against any form of carry, and consider it a non-issue. There is much empirical evidence by a large number of researchers, both liberal and conservative, FBI and others, that have shown in one fashion or another, the truth of the statement that "more guns equal less crime." Here is a book bearing that title, in case somebody believes that is a bunch of baloney. This is the second edition, and I believe there is a fourth edition of this book. This was written by a professor who was an anti-gun person, who after examining the evidence, became a pro-gun person. There are many who fear guns for their own sake, as so many people have been convinced by the media that guns are evil in themselves, and that those who carry them are bent upon evil. If I can accept that hypothesis as truthful, then we have a huge problem with the arming of our law enforcement agencies. Today's media, soap operas, have been changing the attitude of the American people familiarity with firearms to abject fear. Women who were often the chief defenders of home and family, quite often, became better shots than their husbands, and are now vilified in soap operas if they admitted to having any firearm knowledge. Several years ago, a very popular Hallmark movie with the usual love, romance, and tragedy theme, carried a second theme, as many do. The secondary theme of this movie should have been billed as tragedy in a saga of shotgun ownership. The ownership of a shotgun was transferred from one individual to another throughout the entire show. Each new owner committed a crime with it and passed it to another. Each crime was blamed on the shotgun, not the criminal. An example of subtle brainwashing, first class. A firearm in the hands of citizens is no different, and no more to be feared than a screwdriver in the hands of a mechanic, simply a tool of a responsible citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bellitt?
Counselors, Manager Larry, this is all about our Second Amendment rights. Be sure that the Second Amendment is my right, and not a privilege. Rights are given to us, the people, by God. Privileges are offered by governments. What governments give you, they can take away. So the bigger the government, the smaller the people. If you create unconstitutional zones in Beloit or Rock County, you're taking away portions of our rights, the right to concealed carry. Crime, drugs, gangs in Beloit, and state line are shameful, but taking away our individual right to protect ourselves is shameful and unconstitutional. By creating gun-free zones, you're targeting people for the criminals. In closing, at least for now, follow the newly created concealed carry law until it can be made even better for true constitutional carry. In a republic, which we are, the civil authorities' duty is to secure everyone's God-given inalienable rights, not to take them away. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chuck?
That's Kieker.
Kieker.
I don't live in the city, I'm just outside the city limits that will be in the future on Creedy Road, and I'm a federally licensed firearm dealer, get that off right away. I think the way the budgets are going these days, you really can't afford to pass a rule like this, because I could be carrying a gun in here, you wouldn't know, unless you've got the metal detectors, and the TSA x-ray machines, and possibly the people to frisk you. Somebody could walk in here with a gun right now, be sitting anywhere in this audience, you'd never know unless they were bent on evil. And even if you have a police officer or two in the, in the room, how fast can they respond? At Virginia Tech, the perpetrator went into the building, chained the doors shut from the inside, took his time changing magazines, shooting people. That was a gun-free campus. Nobody was able to defend themselves. There was nobody available to get in easily, the police had to wait until the shooting stopped before they could go in for their own safety. At Northern Illinois University, where my daughter goes right now, there was a shooting. Luckily, she wasn't in the building at the time, she was just coming on campus and saw all the, all the hoo-haw going on, wondered what was going on, found out later. Another gun-free zone. This is, what you do when you create a gun-free zone is essentially you create a free-fire zone for the criminals. Everybody in there is gonna be defenseless, except the guy with the gun, and he's gonna be bent on evil. If you allow citizens to carry concealed or openly, law-abiding citizens, they're not people, like was said, to be feared. These are people, they're on your side, they're law-abiding, they'd like to help keep the world a peaceful place, but they're prepared for the emergency that might come up, like, like a fire extinguisher, a gun is a tool, it's a safety device. If you ban guns in city buildings and washrooms and such, you're also opening the doors to liability. I believe the state concealed carry law says that if you post those signs, you accept the liability for anything that goes on that injures people on the premises. And it also specifically makes whoever does not post the sign not responsible for the actions of a concealed carry holder. So you may have a legal aspect here that you wanna, you wanna consider before you pass this also. Speaking off the top of my head, I think that's all I got, but thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the sheets, that's all the slips that we have for citizen participation. Is there anyone else willing to speak? Not, I would like to close that portion of the agenda. Okay, here's one. Come on down.
I'd just like to express the concern of the budget and of the raising of the rental permits. Sent a letter to each one of you from the members of the BPMA. A couple of suggestions that have come up since then is, I believe the rental permit fee was originally established to create the revenue for inspectors to come in and inspect within the city. That was a number of years ago. I believe they've done a very good job in doing that, but I believe now it's also coming down to a maintenance fee, or a maintenance, instead of a full-blown program. So going forward, there may be some opportunities there to maybe extend the length of time between inspections, instead of every three years, maybe you go every five years, as a maintenance versus a full-blown program, and then an opportunity of reducing the number of inspectors, which then would reduce your budget as well, in lieu of raising the fees. Just a couple of suggestions. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to talk to you. Thank you.
With that, I would like to close, close citizen participation at this time and move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there a council person that would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Councilor DeForest?
Mr. President, I'd like to request that Items E and F be removed from the agenda, please.
E and F, anyone else? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of Items 6A through 6D. Is there a motion to approve that portion of the consent agenda?
So moving.
Motion by Vander Bogart, second by Haynes. All those in favor of approving that portion of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion passes 7-0. Item 6E is a resolution supporting the Rock River Trail Initiative. Mr. Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. As stated in your packet, the Rock River, the Rock River Trail Initiative is, the mission of the initiative is to establish and interpret a Rock River River Trail along 300-mile river course from the headwaters in Fond du Lac, Count, 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 the Count, Count D in Wisconsin, to the Mississippi River at Rock Island, Illinois, and then, and a separate Rock River route on roads within the river corridor, to provide access for all the nat, the nat, the natural resources, recreational opportunities, scenic bu- 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 beauty, and historic and cultural assets of the Rock River Val- Valley. To date, numerous communities along the Rock River have demonstrated their support for this initiative, and have adopted the attached resolution. If you allow me to, would you like me to go ahead and read this? The resolution tonight?
I think, Councilor DeForest, if I understand you correctly, there is an individual here that you might want to speak on this.
Yeah, Brian, is it possible to defer a minute or two to Greg Farnham?
Sure. Greg is here as the Chair of the Wisconsin Rock River Init- Initiative, and I'd like to defer it to Greg, and give Greg a chance to speak as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. President Levy, City Manager Art, Sheila DeForest, council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Greg Farnham. I have the privilege of serving as the Wisconsin Coordinator for the Rock River Trail Initiative, and as Mr. Ramsey mentioned, this is a public-private partnership in Wisconsin, Illinois, to establish a Rock River water trail along the, the river, from the headwaters to the Mississippi River, and a separate scenic and historic Rock River route on public highways that run parallel with and in proximity to the, the, the Rock River. Secondly, I'd like to say that you have an absolutely beautiful city. I think the last time I was in Beloit was, when I was in high school, many, many moons ago, and I've had the great privilege of spending some time in your city. We had the opportunity, we, meaning the, the Trail Initiative Council, held its first meeting at Vision Beloit last Friday, and we very much appreciated the beautiful meeting surroundings and the hospitality of Vision Beloit, and have also had the pleasure of spending time on your city streets. We have recommendations from several folks in this area on the streets that could serve as part of the, the Rock River route, and I just very much enjoy my time in, in Beloit, and we look forward to the, having the, the city And we look forward to having the city's support and involvement in this work. Ultimately, our hope is that the Rock River Water Trail will become a national recreation water trail. We're working with the National Park Service in that regard and with the Departments of Natural Resources in Wisconsin, Illinois, to further that objective. Ultimately, we will be making application through the U.S. Department of the Interior and are hopeful that we will be one of the recreational routes selected by the Secretary for National Designation. And we believe that will bring with it a heightened public awareness of the important water resources of the Rock River and the important recreational opportunities that the river presents to all of us. So again, I know you have a big agenda, and I do appreciate very much the opportunity to be here. And we very much ask for your support. As Mr. Ramsey said, I've also had the pleasure of connecting with all of the cities and villages and the five counties in the Rock River Valley in Wisconsin. And we have support resolutions and support letters from each of the five counties, Fond du Lac, Jefferson, Dodge, Dane, and Rock, and all of the cities and villages, and we hope to add the city of Beloit to that list. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Council DeForest, is there any information? Hearing... Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Haynes, second by Nudel. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Six E passes seven zero. Item six F, please.
A resolution concurring with the city manager's decision to authorize the city of Beloit to apply for and enter into a grant agreement for the hydrogen fuel use and municipal fleet's grant through the Wisconsin State Energy Office.
Good evening. In 2009, the city was awarded a grant through the Department of Energy. And at that time, the city began to install and test hydrogen-on-demand systems in several of our city fleet vehicles. And I just want to preface this, that I am not doing any of this work. It's Public Works. It's specifically Danny Lutz, Bill Mickelson, Brett Abear, and our fleet guys. So if you have really technical questions, you're going to have to ask them. But during that time, they've produced some modest but promising results with fuel economy and emissions testing. So the hydrogen program not only helps supplement fuel economy, but it also makes a cleaner exhaust. So there's a two-part to this. Staff believes that using hydrogen to supplement diesel and unleaded fuel has shown promising results and is worth further investigation. As you know, this grant is pretty exciting for the city of Beloit because we're the only municipality in the state doing this type of testing. As we indicated earlier, this grant kind of just showed up, and because there were five Mondays, I think that was in October, it got a little hairy, but we did apply for the grant. And funding for this grant, the money that will be used will be used in time fringe benefits, all associated costs with the program and other related expenses. They're building not just the actual units, but housing the units and installing them in vehicles. This grant is through the State of Wisconsin, the State Energy Office, or the SEO. And it will allow the city to partner with the University of Wisconsin-Madison, Cummings Engine Corporation, and UR Water. Those relationships have already been formed, but this is going to be a little bit more dynamic in that they're going to partner with us and really give us their experts. The installation of this equipment into the vehicles does not affect the warranty. It's a supplement to the actual vehicles. So if that's a concern of yours, it's sort of a non-issue. I can tell you that in the last year or so, we were slowed down last year based on the hydrogen... Well, the water that's used was freezing, and so they've created a solution so it won't freeze this year. So this year, we're gaining more momentum. And they've also done a couple other things to streamline this technology. So it's very exciting, we're looking forward to it. I know Public Works is very exciting, excited about it. And if you have further questions, I would invite you to meet with the guys in Public Works because they get pretty excited about hydrogen.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Lukey, second by DeForest. Any council questions or comments? Council Nudel?
Oh. Beth, one would think that you were the engineer that did come up with this. Great presentation. What's one of the also exciting parts, as I think you had mentioned, was that this project that we've been working on for several years started at the staff level. They came up with this, and they got excited. They showed us the potential savings and what a great opportunity this was for public-private partnerships with educational components. And this is a great opportunity for Beloit to lead in this area and hopefully save future budgets for citizens years down the road. Thank you.
Council DeForest?
Thank you. I'd like to make similar comments to my colleagues that this is... What's so exciting about this project, as you said, is that it started with staff ideas. And it's refreshing to see staff ideas taken seriously and discussed. And it's just too exciting to leave on the consent agenda and be buried there. So thank you for letting me pull it.
Yes, they're very excited about it. And Danny spends a lot of his time with his friends now at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. So he is very passionate about it. We're excited, and you know, it's nothing but positive for the city of Beloit.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Six F passes seven zero. Item seven is ordinance, so seven eight, please.
A proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 15.07 Sub 1 to create Section 15.07 Sub 1G and to amend Sections 15.01 and 15.30 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Beloit pertaining to dangerous weapons in city buildings.
Assistant Attorney Krieger?
Thank you. On November 1st, 2011, the Personal Protection Act became effective. The act permits citizens of Wisconsin to obtain a license to carry concealed weapons anywhere in the state, except where it's prohibited by law or by a property owner. Prior to November 1st, both state law and city policy prohibit the possession of dangerous weapons on city property. After November 1st, the city has the option to allow license holders to carry possession... To carry or possess, excuse me, dangerous weapons in municipal buildings. Municipalities are limited to only prohibiting weapons in buildings and not on all public grounds. The city may also not regulate the possession of weapons when they're within vehicles in the parking lots of municipal-owned buildings. The prepared ordinance conforms with the policy and the state law that was in effect prior to November 1st. The ordinance prohibits the possession of dangerous weapons at all municipal buildings and facilities, with the lone exception of law enforcement officers. The ordinance further authorizes the city manager to amend the city administrative policies employment... Excuse me, employee handbook to prohibit city employees from possession or use of dangerous weapons during the course of their employment. If the proposed ordinance was not something the city council was wishing to do, there are other options that the council could consider. You could allow license holders to carry their weapons in the city buildings or facilities, and that could be either a member of the public or it can be a city employee. You can allow the carrying of weapons other than firearms. That would be a knife or... Billy club is another example under the statute in city buildings or facilities. And again, you're both looking at the public itself or the employees. You should make decisions about allowing employees to carry weapons when they're in their city vehicles. And also should make a determination about employees carrying weapons during the course of their employment. An example of that would be a housing inspector going out to do property maintenance inspections. Although they could carry a weapon in their private vehicle if they're on city business, you could make a determination about whether they could or could not carry a firearm or a weapon during the course of their employment. I was asked to prepare the ordinance as it is written to you today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any council adding question? Council Vander Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you speak, Ms. Krieger, to the issue of enforcement of whatever ordinance we might end up passing, if any? And can you also speak to the issue of liability and how that interplays with the state statute, current city liabilities, and that general issue?
As far as enforcement, what do you mean? Like...
Well, if we say no weapons in here, or you pick the spot, how do we enforce it?
Well, currently, you're not allowed to carry firearms or possess dangerous weapons at City Hall, and we don't have metal detectors or anything like that. So I don't envision that happening. It would just be a similar process to what we're doing now. As far as the liability aspects of the law, they are complex. The law was drafted to give immunity to those private or property owners who do not ban the possession of firearms or weapons. That does not, however, apply to other types of immunity that the city would have. So I don't think the decision should be based on simply the immunity aspects of that law because there are... It's unclear how those are going to play out. For example, if a grocery store decided to ban the possession of firearms, or, excuse me, to allow the possession of firearms, and a firearm were to go off by accident, someone slipping on a grape, for example, the immunities that were provided to that business owner under the statute would not necessarily protect them in that scenario where the weapon accidentally discharged.
Well, we're not a grocery store. We're a municipal corporation. What sort of liability would we entail if we posted it or if we didn't post it?
We do enjoy several other types of immunity that would come into play.
Anything else? Council Vander Bogart?
No, thank you.
Council Spritzer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. I was wondering, just to clarify, this is exactly identical in terms of what sort of weapons are banned and the locations where they're banned to current ordinance, except for the locations that cannot be banned now under state law.
Correct, yes.
So there are more places are permitted, but no more places are excluded. If we pass this, then what has been up till November 1st?
Correct.
What did you use to base the fine scale on?
If you look at the ordinance, the fine scale is set... Mr. Zor was incorrect with his statement about someone who is lawfully carrying a weapon. If they are found in violation of that law, that they would not be fined $25. If you look at subsection four, the offense that's adopted under 175.60, that shows $25 fine across the board. That's a fine for anyone being in violation of the carry concealed law. If someone is in violation of the carry concealed weapon, as it currently is, if someone who is non-licensed holder was found in possession of a concealed weapon, the forfeiture actually remains the same as it is now as well, the 300 to 500, depending upon the type of or the number of violation.
So am I understanding correctly that if you have the license, but you don't have it on you, that's $25? But if you're carrying with no license, that's $300?
If you're caught carrying concealed, and you have... You just don't have your license document on you, and they can verify that you have a valid license, you could get cited for $25 plus costs. That violation is actually voidable within 48 hours if you present your document to the police agency that wrote you the ticket. If someone who does not have a license is caught with a concealed weapon, that fine would be the $300.
And what about if somebody who has a license is carrying on city property where they're not allowed regardless of the license if we pass this ordinance?
That would be the $300.
So that's regardless of license, no license, if they're in one of the banned locations, that's $300?
Correct.
Okay. Two more questions. I had a couple of questions before the meeting from people just wondering about the definition of dangerous weapons, wanting to make sure they're not going to get in trouble for having a pocket knife or something else that they might normally carry. Can you give me an example or help me figure out where the line gets drawn on that if we're not talking about guns, but knives or other things like that?
Under the current carry concealed, I think we always struggle with that. With... I do a lot of the prosecution for the city, and we have kids that possess knives at school and things. There's a lot of officer discretion with regard to the little pocket knives. But a pocket knife could potentially be a dangerous weapon under the law. If that was something that you wanted to exclude, was a particular knife with a particular inch length that you wanted to exclude from the definition, that's something certainly you could do.
Okay. And then I was just wondering if we have received any input from city employees. I know it would be possible we could allow city employees to carry in city buildings without allowing the general public. Do we know if there's been any interest in that? Are city employees who are concerned about allowing carry? Are there city employees who are concerned about wanting to be able to carry in either direction on this?
I didn't do any particular poll, and no one has approached me about that. The proposed ordinance was sent to all division and department heads. So I can't speak if anyone of those individuals received any feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Council Haynes?
Actually, Council Spritzer had one of my... Part of the question. Because I am concerned with the language, talking about dangerous weapons and dealing with particularly small cutting instruments. I think the definition strikes me as too broad. And I think that we should consider tightening up and codifying that much better than it's stated here. But I think we've got time to do such thing. I'm laying this over anyway, so I see no reason to beat that up extensively this evening. But I do... That does represent a concern of mine.
That is the definition that's in the state statute. That's where we pulled that definition from, just so you're aware.
Anything else, Council Haynes? Any other... Council Nudel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So someone had brought up the question about city employees, and it sounded like specifically law enforcement agents. And if... The way I'm reading this, in section one and section five, it makes very specific references to law enforcement officers while they are on... In city buildings or on premise. And so they're...
Active law enforcement officers are excluded by state law and by our local ordinance for this.
And then there was another question about if... Also, then, that was in section one, where it says of the fourth line down, remain in city, of Beloit municipal buildings, facilities, or locations. Does his locations... Could that be conceived too ambiguous and too open for interpretation?
Well, we're only allowed the ability to regulate within buildings. If the council wants to strike that, they certainly can do that. I think the locations I used, because we are talking about different specific addresses, and it was just a term that I used, but if you want to exclude it, you certainly have that ability.
One can see that also in section one, that you have listed specific and exact locations that are public buildings that people frequent. So I think that personally...
We attempted... I worked with our risk manager to try to get all the buildings that we have in our insurance policies as try to have a guide for all of that. I left it open for any future-type buildings that would come into our possession. That's why there is the "but not limited to" language, just in case we were to purchase a building and use it as a city facility. Without having to quickly come back and amend this, we could have the protection there if that's what the council decides to do and then come back to amend the ordinance.
Thank you.
Council Haynes?
Minor point occurred to me. We say park buildings are open-air, park shelters. So were we intending to ban bathrooms?
It would be any park buildings if you wanted to exclude bathrooms. If you felt that was... You certainly could do that.
Just to correct me as a matter of practicality, if they're out there, you know, we potentially let them use the bathrooms because they break the law.
Well, they could also go back to their vehicles and put it in their vehicles if they felt strongly about it. But it's completely up to the council what you'd like to do.
Anything else, Council Haynes? Council Spritzer?
Just one other quick follow-up. What is the current status and what's the status under the law in this ordinance on city buses?
City buses are... There's a little bit different take. What we're going to deal with, any possession of weapons on buses, we're going to do through a policy.
Okay. Which would be not allowing on...
It's... Yes, it's my understanding that Ms. Gavin is shaking her head yes, that we would ban weapons on public transportation.
And is that the current policy as well?
Yes.
Okay. I mostly just wanted to make against kind of thing. If we were allowing it on buses, then it might make sense to allow it at the transit center so people can go in and out. But if we're not, then that would appear to be a moot point. Thank you.
Council Lukey?
Attorney Kruger, one of the speakers mentioned possible liability if people weren't allowed in with guns, we didn't pass the ordinance. Wouldn't there be a greater liability if people were in with guns and somebody brought a gun out and somebody else in a room like this started firing back and innocent people were killed?
I think questions about liability and risks are very complex. And I don't think I could adequately address all of that before you tonight. Certainly, when you have firearms or when you have any kind of behavior that doesn't conform to what the laws are, you do have some risk available. But I couldn't comment on whether allowing or not allowing would provide any greater lesser risk.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Seeing none, is there a motion to lay this over? Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Lukey. All those in favor of laying this over, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Seven zero. Item eight is appointments, there are none. Item nine, council activities and upcoming events, Council Spritzer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I've been continuing to work through the budget in preparation for a consideration tonight. Also, in light of our earlier vote about the Rock River recreational water trail, I had a chance to get out one last paddle on the Rock River the last weekend for Halloween, and it was quite nice to be out there. So very excited about the resolution we passed tonight and hope that that trail project has a chance to move forward.
Thank you. Council Nudel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure I could speak for... Which I never would do, but for any of the councilors and... really anyone on the staff and many concerned citizens, that it has been a long budget process and really a long vote tonight. I just wanted to very sincerely appreciate people's honest efforts to try to bring forward concerns and try to work as hard as they could to make extremely difficult decisions and however it does get passed, whether it's in its current form or if there are any changes, it obviously will impact real people's lives and I greatly appreciate people's efforts to minimize the impact on citizens, especially looking at those that will need special services and also considering that we need to try to maintain the highest quality of life because not only is that great for retaining citizens, but it's also a great economic tool for attracting businesses. But I do want to thank everybody. It's a very complicated budget, but I think it's well balanced and thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you. Counselor Lukey?
On behalf of the city council, I want to congratulate our city manager for his election to a leadership position with the League of Municipality for the state of Wisconsin. It's a real honor for Beloit. Congratulations.
Counselor DeForest?
I have nothing.
Counselor Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remind the public that on the ordinance, item number seven, that this was a layover, that we will, we do have an opportunity to discuss this and give us your feedback over the next couple of weeks and I'll hope to hear from each one of you.
Counselor Van De Bogart?
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
I have nothing this evening as well. Item ten is city manager's presentation. Ten eight, please. Okay.
A resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $4,325,000 in taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2011B.
Mr. York, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. As you may recall, at your last council meeting in October, the council authorized the sale of some refunding bonds to refund some of our outstanding debt for debt at a lower interest cost. We had the sale of those bonds this morning and it's my pleasure to, to say that we came out far better than we expected earlier. The savings that it's expected to be generated over the term of these bonds is in excess of $430,000 and it's about $120,000 more than we originally anticipated. We also were able to downsize the issue somewhat from the original amount of $4,325,000 to $4,280,000. And with that, I'd like to introduce Don Gunderson. She's with our financial advisor, Ellers and Associates. They're the firm that handled this transaction for the city and the sale this morning and Don's here to go over some of the details of this morning's bond sale. So, Don?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening. You've been provided with a packet of information, contains two documents. One, the actual resolution authorizing the issuance and the sale of the bonds. That was prepared today by your bond counsel, Quarles and Brady, and it is the resolution that you'll be considering this evening. As Mr. York mentioned, the size of the bonds were reduced from the original authorizing resolution to proceed with the sale of $4,325,000 and was reduced down to $4,280,000. It accomplishes the same goal of refinancing the outstanding taxable issues. One GO taxable bond and three outstanding taxable state trust fund loans. This is done as a current refinancing and we took bids this morning, or actually at noon today, for the issue. The other document in the packet is the actual sales results. It includes behind the cover sheet, the bid tabulation, which is the bids we received on the issue. We received two bids, one from BOSC Inc. out of Menominee Falls and the second with Baird out of Milwaukee. BOSC was the winning bid with a true interest rate of 2.94 percent. That's the determination to separate the, and compare the bids received. After adjusting the bids down, it also reduced the interest expense. The adjusted tick is 2.9 percent, so we feel that's a very good rate for taxable debt. These debts will, this debt will go out till 2025 and, and as mentioned earlier, refinance the existing outstanding obligations. The remaining pieces of the packet include the comparison of the preliminary sizing on page two to the actual sizing illustrating the reduction in the size of the bonds and the comparison of the planning estimates on page three. As Mr. York mentioned, we were estimating based upon an issue sold the day we set the sale in October, about $311,000. The actual results of today's sale will generate $437,000 of savings over the life of the issue, bringing that to a net present value savings of over 8.7 percent or $357,000 on a net present value basis. So, we're pleased to report this sale result and ask that the resolution be considered to adopt and accept the bids. The last document included, the last few pages of the document are the updated rating. Standard and Poor's has rated these bonds at the, and affirmed the city's debt rating on all its outstanding issues of A-plus. The rating report is attached. It should be reviewed. It says some very positive things about the financial management of the, of the city and it's, provides a stable outlook and ensuring that the debt will be paid in the future. So, if there's any questions, I'm pleased to answer them at this time.
If I could first get a motion. Motion by Nunn, second by Lukey. Counselor Lukey?
Don, am I correct in saying that this is going to save taxpayers $1.4 million?
Actually, the, there have been two refinancing done in the last month and a half. This one and the tax exempt financing. Between the two, it's a combination of that savings. The savings on this are actually benefiting some of the projects that were taken into place in the tax increment districts of the city and will assist in closing that district out and putting those values back on the tax base for the community.
Thank you.
Counselor Van De Bogart?
Can you explain, Ms. Gunderson, why this money that we'll be saving is not available for current use in our, in our regular budget cycles and how it's restricted? Can you explain that to everyone?
There, there will be annual savings, so much every year as illustrated on the example there. Again, for this taxable issue, there, there are projects that have been financed for purposes for economic development and are supporting those projects. Some of that is not directly placed back on, on the levy. It's supported by the revenues from your tax increment district and those obligations will then continue to be paid out of that, those sources of dollars.
Counselor Nunn?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Gunderson. It's always a pleasure, especially because when you show up, we usually save money. So, thank you.
You're welcome. We're glad you have for you.
Need to have you come visit more often, yeah. The, this current summary, every time that we do reissue one of these and, and they do such a fantastic job, there's always a summary attached that comes from the credit rating agencies and this particular one was just so nice to read and it's very, for those that don't see it here, it's very honest and realistic. It talks about the true challenges that Beloit has had and we will have going forward. It talks about the Janesville plant closing. It talks about the Belvedere plant being reduced. It talks about our unemployment challenges. It talks about our household, household income challenges. It's, it's a very honest and realistic snapshot of the city of Beloit and it's so exciting to see these rating agencies still find Beloit at an A-plus bond rating. It's one of the most significant things that has happened in the last decade. We, we're not always so fortunate to be in such good financial shape and this has saved us millions and millions of dollars. So, thank you so much to the entire organization, citizens for participating, our city management, Larry and Paul and directors, job very well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions or comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second and we need a roll call on this.
DeForest?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Van De Bogart?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Lukey?
Aye.
Nunnum?
Aye.
Spritzer?
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eleven, reports from boards and city officers. Eleven eight, please.
A resolution approving the 2012 annual action plan and community development block grant budget. Community development authority recommended approval, five zero one.
Mrs. Christensen, please.
To maintain its eligibility for community development funding, the city must submit an annual action plan each year. That's what this document is. It includes specific objectives for housing, homelessness, public housing and community development. Also includes information on the CDBG process, affordable housing, special needs populations and the CDBG budget. This is an annual plan. We did a 2010 to 14 consolidated plan. This just takes off from that and is really business as usual. The process for allocating our community development funds included making applications available to agencies, having them present their application to the community development authority and then having the community development authority make their recommendations to you on how those funds should be allocated. Public hearing was held by you at your last meeting and now on your agenda tonight is approving this plan and adopting the budget. We did go on terms of the budget. We are allowed to set a cap for public service of no more than 15 percent. We did go right up to the cap at 132,795, which we did get a request from Counselor Nunn to do that, so we tried to accommodate that to provide, you know, the greatest needs on the social service agencies because we know that our citizens are having difficulties. It does have 191,965 under planning and program administration, 136,25 for code enforcement and then under housing rehab, we have 144,615 split between community action for the Merrill Housing Initiative and the city's housing rehab revolving loan fund. And then the second page of your budget just shows the program income generated for a total amount of $359,825. They are all eligible activities under the community development block grant program. They do meet one of the three national objectives and they will all be incorporated into the annual action plan before they're submitted to HUD. There was, as a required 30-day public review. We did put a notice in Beloit Daily News, published a notice on the website, no comments. Were submitted to the planning department and it's on your agenda tonight because we have to submit it to HUD by November 15th.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion. Motion by Lukey, second by Nunn. Counselor question? Counselor Nunn?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Ms. Christensen and the CDA and others. It's not easy to go to the 15. A community doesn't have to go to 15 and when every penny is so tight in our budgets, I'm so appreciative that we're looking out for those that are the most vulnerable in our community in one of the tough economic times and probably all of our lifetimes. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. It's been motioned and second. Any other council, have any questions? Seeing none, or all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes six zero. And if we can get Counselor DeForest back, please.
A resolution approving the 2012 home investment partnership budget. The community development authority recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen?
We are part of the Rock County Home Consortium. Cities of Beloit and Janesville and Rock County are part of that consortium. According to our agreement, 15 percent of the home funds are allocated to a community housing development organization. In Beloit, that organization is NHS. At this point, they're the only one that qualify as a CHODO and then under the agreement, we receive 19 percent of the dollars. At this point, we're estimating that the city's share is 105,886 and the CHODO share is 83,594. That's based on current year budget because I don't believe the feds have yet approved a HUD budget, so that's what we're estimating at this point. On September 28th, the CDA did consider this and did recommend that the 105,886 be used for the city's housing rehab revolving loan fund for both owner occupied and renter occupied properties and that the CHODO dollars be used by NHS for its acquisition rehabilitation program.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Nunn, second by Van De Bogart. Any council comments or questions? Seeing none, it's been motioned and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes seven zero. Eleven C, please.
A resolution approving the 2012 business improvement district plan and budget.
Ms. Brats?
Nice. Thank you.
I got a...
Good evening, councilors. What you have before you is a 30-page work plan and our operating plan for our budget for 2012. I mention the work plan because it really speaks to our board's unanimous approval of both of these documents, speaks to a depth of programming that is multi-layered and complex that is all about creating an environment that's conducive to economic success. And so I'll start really briefly and it's a, it's a long evening for you, just on some of the highlights of what we have been able to celebrate this year. From paddle and trail, being recruited, recruited and actively promoting our canoe kayak launch, the John Rose canoe kayak launch, to fat wallet, moving to town, to Wisconsin and our downtown into a building that was easily turned over because the city had control of it from Kerry. It was a great outcome. To the 306 State Street, which is first-class cosmetology, tripled their student body and is now, has purchased property and is completely, I don't know if you guys drove by the, the building today. It's lit from the inside, redone and the facade's being renovated, restored and the building next to Bagels and Moore being restored and by the same owners. We won multiple state awards this year. We won a national award, Great American Main Street Awards, through the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We're really proud of that because it really holds Beloit as doing a job that is held as a model at the national level for downtowns across the nation. And, you know, multiple, I mean, you could just look at State Street and see what some of the TIF dollars that you guys have allowed us to work with grant programs to help property owners invest private dollars towards their properties and really reinforce the integrity, the architectural integrity, historic integrity of our district, building by building by building. It's being used and I thank you for believing in us and being able, being able to encourage that. We continue to provide rendering, so much of the work that you're seeing being done downtown. There were five facade grants that were awarded this year. We had one upper floor housing unit, one apartment that was completed. We've just awarded another upper floor housing grant. And so, the comprehensive nature just keeps going because we have all of our promotions, which most people know us very well as doing, because it's a very visible part of our, our programming. We host over, it's, it's 45 days of events throughout the year. Our farmer's market, which is, is a 22-week season, but then there's the four weeks leading into it. We saw an increase in numbers. We were thrilled last year to see between 3,000 and 3,500 people come every single Saturday throughout the market and these are numbers that were, we were very lucky to have counted last year. That grew to 4,000 to 4,500, actually is over 4,500. So, we've had a 30 percent increase right around there in the patrons that come downtown and the vendors continue to grow. We had on average 90 vendors on the street and even through the construction, which the State Street reconstruction did not affect them, but certainly the gantry, we have had just great success at everybody working together for the most positive outcome. And I'd like to kind of wrap up, there's plenty more and I won't continue all night long, with the fact that the farmer's market is actually incubating businesses into storefronts. We've seen two buildings purchased by farmer's market vendors that are opening stores downtown. We have others in the wings that have interest. That follows a trend of Bushland Pex opening. That was a farmer's market vendor that we worked with for 18 months to develop a business model. To... worked with for 18 months to develop a business model. To the Little Green Dress, which is the same owners, opening up a second shop. And we're looking forward to seeing that really blossom in our downtown. I think that that's a pop-up. Businesses are a big deal economically across the nation, and we're paying close attention to it, and farmer's market is very much like that. So now on to the details of the numbers that you have in front of you. The budget that you see, the budget lines are essentially very, very similar to what you've seen in the past. One change, it's actually an addition, is that because we're a national award winner, the state has asked us to host the Wisconsin Main Street Awards next year. That means that downtowns across the state are going to visit Beloit, and they're going to visit our downtown, and they're going to get to experience our downtown firsthand. And so we're excited about that, and we want to make it shine. And so diving into the numbers, that's one of the adjustments. The others are really about our executive committee and our board spending a lot of time in workshops. You guys have obviously been doing this a lot at the city level, but for our Business Improvement District, they've scrutinized these numbers. We've been looking at actually a four-year, three- and four-year trend of actuals of our budget, projecting out and really trying to fine-tune all of these numbers as best we can, protecting the investment that our district property owners make in us, and also making sure that we get the biggest bang for our buck. So the numbers are quite similar. Other than that, the Business Improvement District, which is what we manage as a Main Street organization, that Business Improvement District assessment, which I'll explain in a moment, accounts for 37 percent of our revenue budget that's in front of you. Just as a comparison, four years ago, that was 49 percent. So that means that at 37 percent, 63 percent of our revenue budget is fundraising, is business sponsorships. Should we receive grants, that's where that goes, in any investments and savings that we're able to make. We do protect our, even though our expenses are there, we need to be able to act quickly if we have an economic benefit to jump into, but if we are always protecting those expenses throughout the year and watch them closely. Counselor DeForest had a couple of really good questions, and I'm thrilled to be able to answer them for you because it gives us an opportunity to talk about this a little bit further. She had asked, why is there quite a bit of carryover from 2011? Essentially, most of the carryover is held in reserve for accrued expenses, and a portion is used to fund our programming. A few years ago, our auditing firm requested that we increase our reserve to cover contracted services accrued each year through the city. We have been working on increasing this amount each year, and have been successful to date. Each year, we've been able to do that. Just to give you an idea, and it's multiple services that we contract with for the city, but the bill total was over $100,000 last year. And last year, we reserved $64,000 towards it, and as you can see this year, we plan to reserve for $86,800 towards it. So it's held in that budget line. Our annual carryover is focused in this budget line, but it also funds some of our programming. We're an organization that takes on no doubt, other than this deferred invoice from the city, and our carryover would cover actually less than six months' operating costs for our organization, if you play it out that way. Counselor DeForest also asked another question, if there are any expenses that could be reduced, or other revenue that could be generated that might allow us to temporarily ease or lighten the assessment slightly for downtown businesses. This is a great question because it allows us to talk about the Business Improvement District assessment. Short answer, I've already mentioned, is that we do continue to raise money each year in sponsorships. You know, that number starts at zero every year, and we walk the pavement and we have the conversations, and as some of our sponsorships, you know, may not come to fruition, we always manage to do our best to cover anything that's lost. And we've done a pretty good job at holding that, even in tough economic times. Cutting expenses would decrease the services to the district, which have continued to show measured success. We've been scrutinizing the success of our programming over the years and really trying to make sure that we do have the biggest bang for the dollars spent and the resources of human as well as financial. Our committees, let's see, choo-choo-choo. So their eye is really on protecting our programming at this point. We've chosen to continue to show our confidence and to the district, confidence in the district, confidence in Beloit, and to future investors, which is really what we want, to continue to see the momentum of people coming in and really making viable success in their businesses here. The Business Improvement District, which we call BID, is the acronym, was formed by property owners to develop a funding mechanism in the form of a special assessment, and it specifically intended for investment and revitalization efforts of the downtown district. A BID enables funds to be collected through an assessment based on property value, which essentially spreads the investment by property owners fairly and equitably across the district. So it's not landing on one person's shoulders. You know, a lot of nonprofits out there are fundraising, and they're always going to the same handful of people, and this allows our district to share it equitatively. It's important to note that we have an increased rate in four years, while property values have declined in the district by 10 percent. This is an important point, I think, for people to understand, is that the assessment actually self-regulates. When the market shifts, the real estate market naturally adjusts the amount a property owner will pay. So, which I think is reflective, and, well, certainly it's reflective in the assessment over time. And I believe that is it. I'd be really happy to speak to any other questions that you may have at this point.
Hey, Kay, at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval first. Motion by Haynes, second by Lukey. Counsel Noonam?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Brats. We're glad to have you here. One thing I was looking for that I haven't been able to find, and we had been working on in our workshops, was where has the funding fallen for upper-floor housing? At what percentage and what dollar amount? Are we at now?
Where has the upper-floor housing funds?
The upper-floor housing? I believe that counsel was hoping that the DBA would consider upping that again this year, and I was wondering where that.
I'm really pleased that you brought that up, and thank you. We did vote, as long as counsel approves, and I'm not sure, I was asking for, I'm waiting for feedback to make sure legally what we're able to do, but our committee voted to increase the amount, and I should state what that amount is. It was 30 percent of a total project, up to $30,000, and our committee voted to increase it to 50 percent, up to $50,000 per unit. And the big point about this is that our tax increment finance district, number five, is really any expenditures have to be secured by September of 2012, and we want to make the maximum impact of the dollars that you've allotted. So as much as we can do that. It is, you know, we're seeing a lot of private investment in the facades. We do have people that have plans and really do want to invest in their upper floors. It's a little bit more slow-moving than the facades, so we'll keep encouraging that.
Yeah, I think that's great. I'm very appreciative of your board for doing that. Obviously, in these challenging economic times, certainly with the housing market, it's ever that much more difficult, but it is so valuable to improve the property stock in the downtown district, as we know, which is why so valuable to have you guys. Any thriving community has a successful downtown. Ours is beautiful. We still need more foot traffic, and that's the greatest way, I personally believe, to continue to increase foot traffic, and that can get more people to put out a shingle and open up a new little shop. So thank you for that commitment. For the farmer's market, my understanding, for the last several years, as it continues to grow, the second-largest still, I believe, farmer's market in the state of Wisconsin, only that to the city of Madison?
Yeah, you know, that's a rumor. I think it's pretty close to being true. It is huge, certainly in the region. It's the biggest around, so.
If we still do have a waiting list, which I believe we do, which was actually quite large, which I believe was like 60 some vendors, is that right, or is that a rumor?
We had a waiting list of over 20.
Twenty.
Yeah.
That was last year's number. Okay, okay.
That's okay.
But do you have plans of trying to find a way to facilitate that, or do you believe that that stabilizes the market by having more people that want to eventually come in and fill in spaces?
What it does is it allows us to continue to elevate the quality of the market, as we have vendors that cannot return, you know, being, growing to a point to where we have 120-plus vendors that participate with us throughout an entire season. Having a waiting list really helps because there are times, you know, when corn's not in season, and it's a vendor that, you know, it's a farmer that raises corn, we're able to plug somebody else in. For us to have the opportunity to now say, wow, these guys do mushrooms, you know, they grow mushrooms, and we can include them, that's, we can increase the diversity of our farmer's market mix by doing that. We're able to affect the entire quality of the market. I'm not sure that we need to increase the size. Even without increasing the geographic footprint, we're seeing an increase in numbers of patrons. So managing that well and making sure that they know about adjacent businesses, which has been part of our marketing plan for some time, is important.
Okay, great, thank you. Just a couple more here then. And going back to, as you'd spoken about, and Counselor DeForest had brought up, so for the last four years, the, it was what, 3.88 percent, is that what, per thousand on the?
It's $3.88 per thousand dollars in assessed value. So if a property is $100,000 in assessed value, they would pay $388 for the entire year for what, you know, we do as an organization for the downtown.
The, since I've been on the board, it's been a few years now, but I believe that it's been over 10 years since we've looked at the, for the larger properties, the banks and whatnot, not that I'm trying to encourage, you know, increasing those fees on them, but the smaller properties have still increased over the last 10 years in values, and we've still continued to maintain $3,000 for those much larger, more vibrant businesses. Has your board, once again, reevaluated, changing that?
You know, it's an interesting question to ask, and I just want to state some facts about it. We did raise that ceiling, which is a cap. Any property that's over $770,000 in assessed value reaches a $3,000 cap. So it could be a $2 million property, and they still pay $3,000. That was raised from 2,850, in four years ago. So we raised both. There was a 15-cent increase in the per-thousand rate, and then the cap went up a little bit. It is true that 49, it's actually a little over 49 percent of our district is 12 properties that amount to about $22 million. Actually, it's a little over. So have they? No. At this point, our board has really wanted not to raise anything. They've wanted to keep it and really manage ourselves financially as best we can with what we have, and continue to try to generate new lines of revenue generation. Will they in the future? I'm not sure.
I know you've worked diligently to try to find new revenue streams, so kudos for that. And then I'll try to wrap up here. So for many years, the justification for many of the different events that we have throughout the downtown district were that they are fully self-sufficient unto themselves. Now, it is understanding during these tough times that maybe they are not fully self-sufficient. So therefore, as everyone is looking to tighten their belts, their waistlines, are you guys evaluating which ones are profitable, which ones are not profitable, which ones are taking away from the district, and which ones are enhancing it?
It's an interesting question. The justification for events is not specifically for them to be self-sufficient. It has been, and I've spoken to this group in the past, about, it's an area where we're able to gain sponsorships. It's an area where we're able to fundraise and hopefully cover all of the sort of core costs of an event. And it's because it's natural for a business to want to associate their name with something that's vibrant and that's an experience, and it furthers their name. It builds more impressions. It's a great marketing tool. Our goal is to bring foot traffic down, is to bring people downtown to experience our businesses. Some of our events are to specifically walk in the doors of our businesses, our walk-in hall dazzle. Others are for them to gather downtown and linger and realize that this is the place to be, and they come back, and they come back. And our numbers have shown that. We do look at all of our events. It has been my goal to have them cover as much as, and our board, it was a specific thing that I wanted to do. As a whole, our events do cover themselves. When I talk about core costs, I'm not talking about staff time. I'm not talking about operating costs that are appropriated to the support of the events, but for all of the other extraneous costs associated with them, we continue to try. Right now, there are two that don't fully, are not fully whole. A parade, we would rather people give a donation to Caritas as they come in with their entry rather than a fee. So we make choices that we think are important to the community, and we're willing to sort of take that hit on that one, but actually happily, but others make up for it. So I think as a whole, they do. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, very nice. Thank you very much.
Any else? Any other council have any questions? None, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven zero.
Thank you so much.
Eleven D, please.
A resolution authorizing changes to the 2012 schedule of transit fares for the city of Beloit, Wisconsin.
Mrs. Gavin, please.
Thank you, councilors. Okay, I want to just mention that what we're talking about right now is proposing to increase the fares for transit. Last time, provided that this motion gets passed, what will happen is that'll be a four-year increment since we last had a fare increase, which is a pretty significant interval in light of the increases that you've seen at the fuel pumps. Significantly, we're being faced with a sizable loss in funding. The Wisconsin 2011-13 state budget, Act 32, reduces the state subsidy for transit by 10 percent, which actually amounts to about $77,000. As we're all aware, we also can't increase the local levy portion. All the city budgets are being hit equally right now. Fuel has gone up. Healthcare costs, as you know, have gone up. And in summary, I would say, as far as what we're proposing here, really the only means to preserve the current service is to increase the fares to partially offset the significant loss of funding. I do want to say that right now, we're carrying about 300,000 passengers per year. Our ridership, I'm pleased to inform you, has actually started to go up again. We had a little bit of a dip. I'm attributing that partly to the economy. People are consolidating, they're not using the bus less. They're going out fewer times and consolidating their trips. But the beginning of this quarter that we're in right now, we're actually seeing, we saw an increase of 9 percent and then 15 percent in each of the last two months, and I expect that trend to continue for now. Bottom line is, if we don't increase this revenue, then we would be forced to reduce service. And the way transit operates is you can't just simply take a bus off and have it evaporate for an hour or two. Essentially, the service kind of goes in pairs, and so anytime you start to reduce service, it inherently means a lot of service. And quite frankly, I'm going to tell you that that affects all of the passengers. We're talking about, the proposal is to increase the base fare from $1.25 to $1.50. You'll notice in the resolution, it doesn't stipulate this, but I'm going to just draw your attention to it, that the student semester pass, we are not proposing to increase that at this time. I feel that that's an incredible hardship for those families. So we're going to try and hold tight to that price. Again, I can't comment on how long that'll be. I don't think any of us really have that kind of a crystal ball that's operational these days. But I do think that we have had some anecdotal comments from the passengers that have been alerted to the fact that this fare increase is being proposed. I'm pleased to report that we've had no negative comments. We've actually had very supportive comments. They understand, and the comments have generally been along the lines of, we would rather pay additional in fares rather than lose service. So with that, you have a resolution. So with that, you have a resolution prepared authorizing changes to the fare structure. I also want to mention that the proposal is to keep the fares for the Beloit-Janesville express the same at this time. At this point, that would make our base fare in line with what Janesville currently has, provided that they don't have a fare increase, which the inside information I have says that that doesn't seem most likely at this point.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Spritezer, second by DeForest, Councilor DeForest.
Yes, thank you, Michelle, for the long conversation that we've had, because I was very concerned about the impact on our low-income individuals and our elderly and disabled. The riders that I have been able to speak with, as I've ridden the bus, have echoed what you've shared, that they're more concerned about cutting service and would rather pay more than cut service. And so, with a heavy heart, this is painful for me to endorse this fee increase. I am so pleased that we're holding the line on the student semester pass. Thank you for being sensitive to what a huge hardship that is for families, especially if they have more than one student. That's a huge cost for them to bear, so thank you for figuring out a creative way to maintain that level of service at that price for now. And I just, I want to thank you for the work that you do and emphasize that we have more and more non-traditional riders. I was pleased to see the thank you note that transit staff received from someone who, I believe they had some car repairs, and so were riding the bus while their car was being taken care of, but commented on how pleased they were with the service that they received. And I think we're going to be seeing more and more of that as people are really pinching to save money. So thank you for the work that you do, and I'm pleased that we can offer the same level of service. So, thank you.
I'll share your comments with the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Spritezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to thank you for the work you did to keep fare increases as minimal as possible. I know we had talked at a previous workshop about whether things might go up more than this, and I'm glad to see that that didn't happen. So I think I don't relish voting for a fare increase any more than Counselor DeForest does, but I think given the options, this is the best way to move forward, and I want to thank you for keeping it as minimal as we can.
Thank you. I will also say, just to put this in a broader perspective, across the state of Wisconsin, I think, I'm fairly confident saying that, I'm not aware of any of the transit properties in Wisconsin that have not had a fare increase in the last four years. In fact, I think we were the only ones not to. So we're still going to be towards the bottom of the spectrum across the state. So I, you know, hopefully, in the next little while, we can just sort of maintain status quo in light of rising fuel costs, so.
Council Luenel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Gavin. And I agree with Counselor Spritezer and Counselor DeForest, all that they had said. And thank you, I mentioned the understanding for families for, that have students, especially multiple ones, what a challenge that is for them. Transit system, many times, people don't understand as many of the things. In that case, it helps reduce truancy by making sure that they have a safe and viable option to get back and forth from school. And it also creates great safety to families because they know then that their child will be safely returned home or to school. Also, in the last couple of years, I remember, I think it was last year, that you were, two things. I think that you were having more people with disabilities, which is great, that we're taking advantage of this, increasing quality of life, giving people new employment opportunities and employers, a greater pool to pull from, to employ people in our community. But that had slowed up some of the routes, and so you'd made some changes. And I wanted to find out, a year later, how that has affected the system as far as making the stops on time and whatever else.
Actually, quite frankly, I'm delighted, because the routes are staying on time. The passengers, again, it's anecdotal, but people are commenting that they feel, you know, more confident in the ability to board. What we found was some individuals, particularly elderly and disabled, felt as though, and they're aware that it takes longer to board, and somehow that there was some sort of imposition. And they feel now as though they're, you know, truly a member of the system. Ridership, like I said, is starting to go up again. When you make changes in transit, to the fare, to the schedule, to routes, to anything, essentially, you tend to lose ridership. It's new, people have a hard time adjusting, and then it usually takes two or three years to recover that. So the fact that we're only one year out and we've already recovered, in fact, not merely recovered, we've actually made some gains. So, you know, it's a little bit of quantitative, a little bit of qualitative, but both, I would say, are improving. So I'm happy. Again, we don't count the number of individuals that are using mobility devices, but I know that it's extreme. We're actually contemplating the next time we build a bus, whatever that may be, reconfiguring the interior to accommodate more than two wheelchairs.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Lukey.
Michelle, do all tokens have the same value?
They do.
Okay, I was confused on here, because apparently it's more expensive for four tokens as opposed to eight tokens on this.
Yeah, I apologize. That should be reversed. I'm not sure what may have transpired there.
Same with ten and fifty.
Yeah, and absolutely, those numbers should be reversed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Council Vander Bogart.
Ms. Gavin, do we remain either the smallest or one of the smallest cities in the state to maintain a regularly scheduled transit system?
We are not the smallest, but we are one of the smallest. When you're talking buses, actually, there's, I'm trying to think now, I believe there's three that are similar sized, or two, and there's two that are smaller. And, but yeah, we are definitely one of the smaller ones, which, you know, again, I look at it as a very positive asset, that, you know, the community has had this tradition going back, it'll be a hundred and four years now, that we've had public transit here in Beloit. So I think it's a very good asset. And when, again, when we have three hundred thousand plus people using it annually, our ridership numbers are actually quite high relatively. If you look at the amount of fare box revenue that we get as a percentage of our overall funding, it's much higher than what you would ordinarily expect, quite frankly, even for a large system. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? I believe we have a motion and a second for approval. Are those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any none, passes seven zero. I am eleven E, please.
A resolution authorizing changes to the 2012 schedule of fees, charges, and rates for the city of Beloit, Wisconsin.
Mr. York.
Each year is part of the budget process. Each department that provides programs and services for the citizens of the city reviews the fee structure that we charge for some of these various services. Consistent with prior years, this year, we're suggesting changes in a number of the fees for services and programs the city provides. As you can see, it's quite a detailed list. I won't go through each of these in detail, but just to sort of highlight some of the fees that are proposing to increase for next year. The fire inspection fees are being proposed for an increase in 2012. The fees that the fire department charges to clean up hazardous material spills is being proposed to increase next year. The fees we, the fire department charges for extrication rescue services is scheduled to increase, and the fees that the city charges for ambulance services for both residents and non-residents are proposed to increase for 2012. In our Parks and Recreation Department, we're proposing quite a number of changes in the golf course fee schedule for next year. A lot of this is designed to attract additional play at the golf course next year. We're also, the Parks and Rec Department is proposing increases to fees for our cemeteries, both the East Lawn and the Oakwood Cemeteries, for grave openings, marker settings, what so forth. The rental rates for the Rotary River Center are proposed to change. There are a couple of small fees increases for use of the pool. I don't believe that this includes any of the normal daily access fees for the swimming pool. Looks like more for specialized-type services that are provided there. There's a couple of recreation service fee increases for picnic rentals and basketball league fees. And then some of our rental rates for picnic shelters and pavilions that are located in the parks are proposed to increase next year. One increase is going to affect pretty much everybody in the city, and that's the one-dollar increase in the solid waste removal fee for next year. We're recommending that that be increased from thirteen to fourteen dollars. A lot of that is due to the fact that we did lose some of our recycling grant funds from the state of Wisconsin for next year, and that's to help offset some of that loss of revenue. And there are a couple of permit fee increases scheduled for our code enforcement and housing services department. The electrical inspection fees, permit fees, and also the rental permit fees will increase from thirty to thirty-five dollars. All these fees are used to offset the costs of providing these services. In most cases, it doesn't cover the entire cost of providing either the program or the service, it's just to help offset a portion of those costs. And with that, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, is there a motion for approval? Motion by Haynes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lukey, Council DeForest.
I have two questions, one that has to do with the golf course. I mean, I don't know if it's more appropriate for Brian to address this. I wanted to check with you. I did appreciate you getting back to me to let me know that the golf advisory committee did take a look at these fees and were in support of them. And I did look at the survey for the golf course users. There was a survey that was done, and there was a very high percentage, overwhelming majority, that referenced lowering the fees for golf courses, part of their comments. I just, I wanted to get a better sense of, if you could speak publicly about the rationale for lowering the fees. Some residents might say, why are we lowering the golf course fees but not lowering the pool fees, for example? So could you talk a little bit about that, please?
Sure, be happy to. Sure. We basically looked at three main factors in identifying how we defined our fees for this year. The first one being is that we had a tremendous amount of construction activity at the golf course this year, which we're all well aware of occurred. And what we wanted to do was try to keep our fees lowered so that we could show our appreciation to those who bought a pass this year and encourage them to return. We felt that was imperative, as we actually lost a lot of our pass holders this year, went to other places and didn't buy a pass. So rewards those who did buy a pass from us for this year. The other concept was we wanted to create a fee structure that would attract and enhance players to want to come to Kruger Haskell Golf Course to play and bring the volume of players to our golf course through various promotional ads that we will be doing. We always anticipate we get a lot of high sales at the first of the year, as what we've actually done this year is we're offering a lower fee before March first. If you buy your pass before March first, you get a huge reduction in your cost. After March first, our fees go up reasonably to a similar rate as they are at this current time for 2011. Outside of that, we thought outside the box, and a lot of commute, community golf courses provide a fee structure where you have a weekday fee and you have a weekend fee. And what we did was we merged those two fees to create one fee. So it's the same rate any day of the week that you come to play. We think that gives us an advantage over a lot of the other golf courses in the area in that fact, that everyone then knows our fees are a set design fee each day of the week. Through that process, we find that, we made a comparison to all the other golf courses that we consider our competitors in the area, and looked at what their fee structures are at this current time as well, and tried to be competitive with them. And in many cases, we're offering a late, excuse me, a rate that's slightly less than them, and projecting what our fee structure will be for 2012 with that new paradigm of having a one-set rate for each day of the week. We think all those things combined will bring back the golfers to Beloit to want to play more. We created an ad campaign this year that we want to take forward into next year. Talking, so we've been talking about the tradition of Kruger Haskell Golf Course, and what we've done is we've gone beyond that, and we said, rediscover Kruger Haskell Golf Course, just play it. Because we believe if you just come out and play it, you'll see it's a quality golf, a golf course, and the new ponds that were created on the golf course truly do enhance the play for those who are looking for a challenging course. But yet, it's a very typical course that any average player can come out and play and enjoy. In that regard, I think our fees are right within the ballpark of where they need to be to bring the players to our course and hopefully drive the revenue. The same way, I will always say McDonald's drives revenue by offering the value board. We're doing the same thing by trying to say, playing Kruger Haskell Golf Course is a value in the Rock Valley area, and we think they will come.
Thank you.
Sure.
Appreciate that. And I do have another question, if that's okay? No, not for you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The other one is probably for Julie Christensen. I am concerned about the renter permit fee increase and the hardship that places on our local business, men and women who are landlords, and how that will be passed on to their tenants. Could you talk about why that fee increase is needed and what would happen if we choose not to increase that fee, please?
The city ordinance requires the rental inspection program to pay for itself. The last time we did a fee increase was for the 2009 calendar year. It's really just intended to pay for the increased costs of doing business, you know, doing the rental inspection program. It is a CDPG program income. It is, was the line item. It went up thirty thousand, if you looked on page two of your budget. If you don't increase the fee, it will either result, either, as it is now, since you approved that budget, as it stands now, it would require, that's about half of an inspector. So either we'd have to revisit the CDPG budget and pull thirty from something else, or we'd be looking at cuts in the program.
Okay, and then also, I had asked, and I just think it would be useful for my colleagues to know if Janesville has a renter permit program.
No, and it's a rental permit, because a renter permit implies we're permitting renters, but we're actually permitting the units. And I just wanted to, so that for people who don't know what that is, Janesville does not have it. It's actually something Beloit did in the mid-'90s, and it was fairly cutting-edge. I mean, and I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly what was going on at the time. There's very few communities in Wisconsin that have it. So Janesville does not have a rental permit program or the program to our level.
And then also, I mean, just because I think it is related, how many code enforcement inspectors does Janesville have in comparison to Beloit?
I don't know.
Okay. I guess my concern is, I understand the benefits of it. I just, I think it places an unfair burden on this particular group of business owners. And I agree that, and we talked about this in budget workshop, so I don't think I'm sharing anything, because it was shared publicly, my concerns and some of my colleagues' concerns about the frequency of the inspections, that perhaps those could be less frequent and we could do with less code enforcement inspectors. And, you know, I certainly, I understand that if we don't approve this increase in rate, that it will affect how many code enforcement positions we have, but I guess I'm saying, I don't think that's necessarily such a bad thing. So thank you for allowing me to make that comment. Thank you.
Okay. Council Spritezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I share some of Counselor DeForest's concerns about the rental permit fee, and I, we discussed some of the options around frequency of inspection and other some of the options around frequency of inspection and other things during our workshops. I think it was clear at the time that that there wasn't a majority will to change anything on that, so I'm not going to make any motions tonight, but just wanted to to note that I I think it's worth continuing to look at as we move forward and obviously place a high value on making sure that housing stock is is kept in good condition and improving the quality of our neighborhoods, but that we should just keep an eye on on what the appropriate levels there might be as as we move forward and look at how we're doing with that program.
Anything else? Counselor Nuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I can't resist to agree with Counselor DeForest and Spritzer on that part. Heard from so many people, it's a wonderful program, and I think all counselors want to retain it. It's just in these extraordinary times when people are having to make difficult decisions, if they don't have to fix something this year, they can put it off. I know we give them waivers. But it it's just getting harder and harder, and we're seeing more and more foreclosures in any possible way that we can, you know, reduce that risk. It would be better for the overall community. But we do need to retain the program, because it has been very significant in changing how people like the gentleman earlier tonight, I forget his name, Greg Farnum, hadn't been to Beloit since he was in school, and coming to Beloit again. It is a renewed city, and it's very exciting, and that is a cornerstone. But hopefully, we can look at how frequently we do that.
And the majority of foreclosures are coming out of owner occupied, not landlords losing their houses. So this fee and owner occupied foreclosures are unrelated issues. I mean, the overall inspection program includes owner occupied people, but this particular fee is just related to rental inspections. And from what I'm seeing through the sales, it's owner occupied people who are losing their houses, and we're getting more landlords picking some of those up. So we're getting more rental units coming onboard. So, I mean, this fee is intended to cover our costs for 12 for the current program to inspect about 6,000, you know, a third of 6,000 units. So, I mean, that's really what the fee is for. It's not about the drive arounds to city. These are the interior inspections that this fee pays for.
Thank you. Then I the reason I pushed the button was, you know, as a small business owner, it seems like you're always getting another user fee. I don't know any small business owner that probably doesn't complain about user fees. And I'm not saying that we don't have user fees. We do, obviously, and I wish, you know, they could all go away, and I'd be thrilled, but it would be impossible to balance the budget. And seeing every single one of them in front of you here, you know, I'll admit, I'll look at it a little differently, maybe a few more from county, maybe a few more from the state. But so so I appreciate you trying to keep them to a minimum. It was one of our only options for balancing portions of the budget. One specific question, I've been trying to find this one on here. Some in my industry, we call it the grease trap fee, but it must be one with solid waste. And so it used to be a fee that you paid, I believe that one was every year, and now this year, it's every five years. And I don't know, I'm not seeing that one on here.
Mr. President, that's unrelated. That's a that's a mandated license that all commercial property owners and businesses in the city are required to get for their discharge to the wastewater treatment system. The permit is issued on a five-year cycle. And the cycle came up this year, so all the businesses and all the institutional properties in the city, anything of a large scale, is required to get that permit. And I think most of those are finished now, or through the cycle, getting them all renewed, and that will come up again for another five years.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lukey.
Brian, just a quick suggestion on the golf fees. Several fees, like the senior daily, junior daily, and the Sunday golf are the same all season long. Why don't you just save some space and combine those? You got it, Mr. Twice.
We actually combined a lot of fees as as they are. We advertise our certain rates during the spring and some, well, you say I could actually advertise spring rates, summer rates, and fall rates, and what we've tried to do is, excuse me, to merge our spring and summer rates in the one, which is similar to how a lot of golf courses run their fees, and then they change their fees and lower them in the in the fall. So we've actually tried to merge some of some of those fees, so so they would all be the same. But we've actually had, I think, three pages worth of fees that we've kind of now, in restructuring, narrowed it down to two, because it was very lengthy.
I'm just saying you could put down from the beginning, March to November, it's the same fee. You've got it listed twice, but it's the same fee.
Right. That's just the way it is it is here, but when we post it at the golf course, it probably will be posted in that regard, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen none, there is a motion. Counselor DeForest.
I would like to motion for an amendment that the renter permit fee is not increased as part of the resolution authorizing the changes to the schedule of fees, charges, and rates.
There is a motion. I mean, there's an amendment to this document. Is there a second to that amendment? Is there a second to that amendment? Second by Nuno. All those in, council discussion. Counselor Nuno.
Thank you. I wanted to ask staff if they could explain to us, now that we have it on the floor, we can actually discuss it, which we can't without making two motions. Could you please explain to us what the impact will be on the budget as best you can?
It's $30,000. I said that earlier. If you're not going to amend the block grant budget to work that in, then it is a half an inspector on average. I mean, that's from what we had, I mean, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's about that. It's about a half an inspector. So you're essentially laying off half an inspector.
Thank you.
Counselor Spritzer.
Thank you. If if that were the result, am I correct that we would have to then make an amendment to 11F before looking to approve that to make that adjustment in order to have a balanced budget?
I don't know.
The budget itself.
The CDBG budget?
No.
No, it's in the CDBG budget. It's in the CDBG budget. The income itself is an estimate, so if all you're changing is the income, you don't. If you're $30,000 up out of the new grant dollars, then yes, you, I don't know if you can revisit the budget. I don't know how that works procedurally, but I mean, it depends on what you're wishing to do as part of that. So if you're wanting to pull $30,000 from one of the applications, or if you're looking to simply change the income line, which was on page two, you don't really need to amend that, because that was just an estimate of what money is there. So it depends on what your intent is, I guess.
Well, I guess I guess I'm wondering what the what we what we would have to do in order to in order to be consistent, or at what point we would have to take follow back action if if this amendment were to pass.
Mr. President, could I please answer the budget question? Number one, you need to take no action tonight. If your amendment passes, the fee will remain the same for this year. The community development block grant has not even been awarded yet. The budget that you approved earlier is based on our best estimate of what block grant funding will be. There's also another variable in the block grant funding, which is the local program revenue for the year. If we're able to make up the $30,000, no action would be required. If we're not able to make it up at some point during the year, there would have to be a budget amendment where some funds will be shifted from one CDBG activity to cover the inspection cost. To be very direct about this, the rental permit program, along with our citywide code enforcement program, are the two cornerstones of the city's neighborhood preservation and redevelopment initiative. It would not be in the city's interest to back off of either one. We work with landlords and property owners all the time in response to economic issues and concerns in terms of scheduling work, making loan low interest loan funds, deferred loan funds available to help property owners, including investors who, you know, are in a financial need. So we do that on a regular basis. In any event, we would certainly now want to back down on our efforts to protect and preserve the quality of this housing stock in our residential neighborhoods.
Anything else?
Yes, I could just make a comment. As I as I said earlier, I do think that this is worth looking at further in the in the future. And as I said, in a in a response to members of the BPMA to some questions, I think that I also think that the $5 increase is probably not a at a make or break point. You know, I do want to make sure we keep tabs on the increases, but in light of of the point that we're at and not wanting to jeopardize what changes we might have to make down the line at this late date, I'm not going to support the amendment, even though I do support looking at this continually in the future.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to the amendment. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Nay. The amendment fails by two. Now to the original motion. There's been a motion and a second to the original motion. Is all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you. Item 11F, please.
Resolution approving the operating budgets appropriating funds and levying property taxes necessary for the operation and administration of the city of Beloit for the year 2012, including the 2012 capital improvement budget, the Beloit Public Library budget, and further authorizing the city treasurer to spread the city property tax, along with the apportionments certified for other jurisdictions upon the current tax rule of the city.
Thank you. Mr. York, please.
Obviously, there's been considerable discussion, public debate, presentations on the budget this year. I've had three workshops with the council, two town hall meetings, a public hearing, numerous other gatherings and get togethers to discuss the budget. And I won't go into any detail on the budget this evening. I think we've covered all the details up to this point. Would like to add that we have made changes to the budget from discussions that have come out of the workshops and the public meetings that we've had. There were some adjustments that were identified and reviewed a couple of weeks ago at both the the town hall meetings and one of the public media, public hearing meetings. We did adjust the budget by about the general fund budget, I should add, by about $262,000 based on some of these changes that were discussed. And at this point, the the total budget for the city for all funds next year, including the capital funds, is just under $92 million. It's an increase of about one or decrease, I'm sorry, of about $1.3 million from the current year budget, about 1.4%. The general fund budget, which is the city's major operating fund that most of the citizens receive their direct services from the city from, is just under $30 million, 29.7 million for next year as is. And that does reflect, as I indicated, the changes that we discussed at several of the public meetings. That's a decrease of about $450,000 from the current year budget, again, about one and a half percent. This resolution provides authorization and appropriations for all the city's operating funds, including the general fund, the special revenue enterprise fund operations, capital funds, or debt service funds. This also sets the city's tax levy for next year at $13,474,409. And so I can find the sheet on that. And that is an increase of about $250,000 over the current year's tax levy, just under 2%. And that will have an effect on the the tax rate for this year. At this point, the rate, and this is an estimated rate, because we haven't received final values from the state as of yet, of $10.21 per thousand valuation. That's an increase of about 18 cents over the current year's rate. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the budget for 2012.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Spritzer. And Counselor, comment. Counselor DeForest.
Yes, thank you. I guess I would like assurance that as a body, we have the right to revisit the budget and amend it at any point if we decide we need to. I guess maybe Mr. Casper can answer this. How many city councils does it take to request a budget amendment? And what, I mean, is there a process in place to request that that discussion take place? If you could comment on that?
Well, if there had been, obviously, amendments during a given fiscal year to to budgets, and typically, that process is handled through the the agenda preparation procedure, and then ultimately, the city council or meetings as as any other decision of the council.
So can an individual city counselor request at any point of the the city council president to include an agenda item to discuss budget amendment? Is that possible, or?
Sure. I think you're free to do that to council president, to city manager at any time.
Okay, I just I just wanted to make sure, because I guess in my mind, the budget is a living document, so I just would like to emphasize that, and that we have the authority to revisit it if need be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'd like to follow up. So if we did decide, if it was on the agenda that we were going to consider, does it take a simple majority, or does it take a super majority to to change the the budget?
If that was directed to me, Counselor.